Good evening and welcome to a joint meeting of the City Council and School Committee, called by myself, Mayor David Narco-Witz, in accordance with North Hampton Charter, Section 7-2, as part of our annual budget policy. Begin the meeting tonight by asking the executive assistant to the City Council to call the role of the joint meeting.
Sure. Councilor Bidwell.
Here.
Councilor Carney.
Present.
Councilor Dwight.
I'm here.
Councilor Klein.
Here.
Councilor Labarge.
Present.
Councilor Murphy.
Here.
Councilor Nash.
Here.
Councilor O'Donnell, not present. Councilor Shara.
Here.
Ms. Burnham.
Present.
Ms. Bisansky.
Present.
Ms. Fallon.
Present.
Ms. Hennessy.
Present.
Mr. Kaufman.
Present.
Ms. D'Amire. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Foss.
Present.
And Mr. Zakowski.
Present.
Excellent. So, thank you very much. We definitely have a quorum. I also wanted to note the presence of my colleagues from Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School, the Chair of our Board, Michael Kehlain, as well as Dr. Andy Lincolnhofer, who's the Superintendent of Smith Vocational. They are actually our other school committee, and one of the things I'm going to ask the Charter Review Committee is to address that issue possibly in the Charter, because they should probably be more formally part of this meeting as the other local districts. So, I'll ask the clerk to just pull up the opening slide. I do want to say that those of you who've endured this presentation, Mayor may be happy to know that I've done a lot of work this year to actually shorten it, to compress it. You've seen it. If you've seen it for many, many years, we do a lot of comparison slides to our comparative communities, and we can provide those kinds of comparisons at a later date. But I really wanted to focus on, obviously, the key question, which is the outlook for the FY 2020 budget. But I wanted to do so specifically in the context of the city's fiscal stability plan, which we've been operating under since fiscal year 2014. I wonder, would it be a problem if the lights were turned down? Because I think it would be hard to...
It's hard for me to see. Thank you, Moore.
Thank you so much, Ms. Foss. So, we're going to go through it, and I'll obviously can stop for questions along the way, but we should have lots of time at the end for questions. So, I'll ask for the first slide. So, just to relive the history, the original fiscal stability plan happened in the spring of 2013. In 2013, we were trying to prepare for the FY 14 budget. At that time, we were facing about a $1.4 million operating deficit that was going to require significant cuts to school and city, including layoffs in both city and schools, school and public safety and other departments. So, we basically went to the taxpayers of the city. We developed a multi-year fiscal stability plan that, in conjunction with a $2.5 million override, would allow us to have stabilized the budget, fill the gap in FY 2014, but then give us some stability over the next four fiscal years. And that original plan called for us basically setting aside the override revenues that we didn't use to fill the gap in 2014. And again, I mentioned we had about a $1.4 million gap. We had the voters voted to approve a $2.5 million override, and we put that in to fill the gap in the city, but we also, we didn't put it all in there. We put about 1.7 of it. The rest of it, we banked into the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund, which we set up. And the way the plan was set to function is that we would use that infusion of new revenues to stabilize the budget. It would allow us to have reasonable budget increases over the next several years. Each year, we would use some of the new revenue, but we would also bank some of the new revenue. So, we would build up the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund. And then essentially, that would get us, at the time, we thought it would get us through 14, 15, and 16, and then we would have to tap into the built-up funds to be able to get through the 2018 budget, which is what you see in blue. And then by 2018, we would have depleted all those funds, and we'd be back to talking about either cuts or potentially another override. So, that's sort of the background of where we came. And so, if you go to the next slide, I can talk about sort of how we came to where we are today. So, that was the theory at the time, but in practice, the plan has actually allowed us to experience six years of fiscal stability, from '14 right up to the current fiscal year 2019 budget. And there's reasons for that, which I'll try to review with you tonight. Three that we sort of highlighted that we want to talk about. Certainly, key was greater-than-anticipated new growth from building activity in the city. That means new buildings, new taxable growth. We had a surge in building permits. I guess that correlates with all the new building. And motor vehicle excise revenues exceeding projections. We also had some small but unanticipated gains in state aid, shocking as that may be. And now, we'll drill down a little bit further to explain why we think, why those things changed. But just again, to show you on the right-hand side, that's how the stability plan has actually played out. We were able to bank fiscal stability funds. It wasn't until the current fiscal year, FY 2019, that for the first time, we actually had to tap into them to balance the budget, about $277,000. So, we thought we would need to do it a couple fiscal years earlier, but now I'll go through some of the reasons why we've been able to extend that. So, if you can go to the next slide, Laura. So, new growth. When we put together the plan, obviously, we were coming out of a recession, which was part of the reason why we and the state and the federal government were in such difficult economic times. So, we made projections based on the five-year averages of new growth. So, on the left, you can kind of see the new growth averages, the prior fiscal years, which were FY 2009 through FY 2013, and we were averaging about $524,734 in new growth. Moving to the right, the red is what we projected based on those previous numbers, and then the green above is actually what actually played out during those years. And new growth, for those of you watching at home who may not understand what that means, new growth is key because, in addition to the levy limit that cities and towns must stay under, new growth gets added to the levy limit. So, it basically allows you to raise additional tax revenue above and beyond the proposition two and a half limit. So, you can see, North Hampton experienced some significant new growth during that period. Again, we were coming out of a period of averaging about $524,000, and we had years of 916, 938. It dipped back down into 733, and then again, back up over $900,000. So, that new growth meant new revenue that could fund the city budget and, again, stave off our need to use the fiscal stability fund. Next slide. Motor vehicle excise and building permit revenue. So, again, these are just two economically sensitive revenue metrics, but not insignificant. Motor vehicle excise tax averaged $2.15 million over the five years, FY 2009 to FY 2013. We used a projection of $2.2 million in that first analysis, again, trying to be responsible. And then you can sort of see the green line on the left, that the actual revenues came in significantly higher, 2.6, 2.5, 2.6, 2.7, 2.9. So, again, additional revenue that we were able to pay for city and school services without having to tap into the stability fund. On the right are building permit revenues. We were averaging about $520,000 a year in the prior five years. So, we were using about $525 per year based on that past performance. Due to the economic strength of our economy, we ended up seeing much higher numbers, 587, 661, 758. In FY 2018, it was 875. Again, that ties to all the new building construction at Village Hill, King Street, other parts of the city where we had a lot of new construction going on. So, those are two factors. Next slide. Small gains in state aid. So, again, coming out of the five-year period prior to the override, you know, we were going through a period where we, in many cases, had level-funded local aid and bare minimum Chapter 70 dollars. We were fairly conservative in our estimates, but so, using about 1% per year based on the prior year's growth. And so, what, a couple of things changes. Governor Baker's administration, I give him credit for this, they made a commitment to tying the growth of local government aid or unrestricted general government aid to the increases in tax revenue. So, we went from 1% increases to 3.39% increases, which equals about $130,000 per year over that five-year period. There obviously were decreases and offsets, but the net overall increase in state aid compared with the original plan was 844, 592, or about $169,000 more per year. Again, keeping that in the context of, you know, 900-plus-million-dollar budget, so, not 900, sorry, I'm spacing out there. $111 million budget, $96 million general fund budget. So, next slide. Health insurance. This I talked about a little bit in the current-year budget message. Health insurance is one of our largest budgetary items. In the current fiscal year, it's over 10% of our general fund budget. Health insurance costs were growing at a rate of about 3.2% a year in those years leading up to the override. One of the key things we did in FY 2014, and I talked about this in this year's budget message, we did adopt the Health Insurance Reform Law that allowed us to work with our employee unions to move the city into the Group Insurance Commission, or the GIC, which is the state insurance pool. And so, when you take a look at what we had projected in terms of growth, our health insurance costs grew at an average between 2014 to 2018 of just 1.37% after joining the GIC, rather than the 3% that we had laid out in that original plan based on past increases. So, that's a significant savings on the health insurance side. Again, allowing us to put that revenue, you know, not having to spend that money, being able to put it into city and school services and not have to tap into the fiscal stability fund. So, those are some of the factors. Also, during this period of fiscal stability, we've been able to do a number of things over this period. And you can turn to the next slide, Laura. We've been able to maintain city and school staffing. That was one of the key things. For those of you who are either on the City Council or on the school committee in the years leading up to this particular stability plan, we typically spent the budget process deciding what we would cut each year. We would be facing level funding, usually for all departments. Mayors would have to tell the city and school that we have to level fund, and school committees would spend their time, and department heads would spend their time figuring out what they could cut to get to level, because every year, our expenses go up, our fixed costs go up, and if revenues and state aid don't maintain that. So, it's really allowed us to not have to face these kinds of layoffs and to really focus on how do we maintain and strengthen the good city services and school services that we have. We've also been able to rebuild and grow our reserves for financial flexibility, not just the stability fund, but also our free cash and our capital stabilization and our general stabilization. Our bond rating has been upgraded during that period. So, again, when we started this process, we had an A-plus stable rating in FY 2013. We were upgraded to AAA in FY 2016 and been able to maintain that through the present. Very critical in terms of our ability to borrow and bond for city and school projects at a much more favorable rate, which means lower debt service, which means, again, more general fund dollars that can be devoted to paying for services. We've been able to fund important capital needs. We've really gone through, in FY 13, the year that I, my first year in office, the prior year, the city hadn't done a capital program because we had no money to do one. We had no money to do it. So, we really had to rebuild the capital program, which is vital, because if you do not maintain your buildings, if you do not maintain your infrastructure, if you do not maintain vehicles and upgrade them, it's inevitably going to cost you more, either to maintain them or to replace them down the road. We've also invested in parks, in open space, in rail trails, in affordable housing, in renewable energy, in bike share, in climate resiliency and regeneration, and a number of other important projects that having that budget stability have allowed us to focus on. We've also maintained a competitive tax rate, $17.37 per thousand in the current fiscal year, which is key, not only in terms of economic development and making us attractive, but also our commitment to making sure that we don't price our residents out of North Hampton because of property taxes. So, if you go to the next slide, I'll just quickly focus on the tax rate. This is just a quick comparator of our tax rate. These are the comparison communities we use in Western Mass. The left-hand slide is our commercial tax rate in yellow. The residential tax rate, the $17.37, is shown in the middle slide. You can see we're sort of below average amongst our Western Mass cohort per thousand. When you look at average single-family tax bill for 2019, you'll see that the state average is $6,085 a year. We're below, just below that, at $5,399. And you can see in that category, we're third behind Longmeadow and Amherst in terms of our tax rate. Longmeadow, I would add, has the highest residential tax rate in the Commonwealth, so they're kind of a real outlier. But that's what we've been able to do in terms of maintaining a competitive and affordable tax rate. If you go to the next slide, just zoom in a little bit on the new growth issue. Hmm. Not sure. Uh-huh.
No.
Can you go back one? Huh. Okay. All right. Well, pretend there's a slide there. I'll just describe it to you, and you'll have to look at it later. It was just basically a slide showing where we fit in new growth. Really fascinating, when you look at those comparator communities over FY 2015 to 2019, and you actually add up the cumulative value of the new growth, North Hampton has the most new growth over that period in terms of cumulative value, $275 million in new growth. And that's ahead of West Springfield, Chickapi, Westfield, and all the other communities. Though, when you switch it over to looking at it as applied to a levy limit, some of those other communities raise more revenue because they have much higher tax rates. But it's fascinating to me, and we don't have Springfield on there because we don't really compare ourselves to the third-largest city, and they probably have had some significant growth over the last couple of years. But it's a sign of North Hampton's economic strength that a big part of new growth in the Valley at least is happening in North Hampton. So, that's the slide you would have seen. So, take my word for it. Next, this is just a quick depiction of the reserves that I talked about. The red, the red is stabilization. The yellow is capital stabilization, and the blue is the fiscal stability fund. You can see that we've been able to build those back up again, both for emergencies, for capital projects. We do draw from the capital stabilization fund to fund capital projects. And then, of course, we've got the fiscal stability fund, which we've tried not to touch over time. I always have to point out, if you look at where we were in FY 12 and FY 13, you know, we were, you know, had a couple hundred thousand dollars in reserve during FY 12. Again, with a $100 million budget, that was our emergency fund. And again, it was because of the fiscal circumstances and the fact that the economy had crashed and local aid had been cut. But that's, you know, again, played a significant role in how we've been able to stabilize and restore our bond rating and get it up to the top bond rating available. Next slide. We've also made significant progress, as I said, investing in our infrastructure, in our facilities, in our vehicles, and in our equipment. This is a breakdown of the investments we've made. You can see, starting below $2 million in 2014, up to a high of almost $7 million in 2018, and then, you know, coming back down a little bit in 2019. The dark blue is the school department. We've made significant investments, particularly in technology, in our technology infrastructure, buildings, roofs, equipment. The red are city departments, a combination of city departments. Yellow is Public Works. Blue is Forbes Library. The light blue at the top is Forbes Library. We've made some investments at Forbes Library as well. So, that shows what we've been doing to rebuild our capital program. Again, going from FY 12 and 13, where we didn't, FY 12 at least, where we didn't have a capital program. Next slide, please. Part of those capital investments have been in transportation infrastructure. We've made a significant investment in things like repaving our streets, in our stormwater infrastructure, in bridges, in pothole repairs, in sidewalks, traffic calming. These are all broken down by color coding. The largest, the largest is, of course, street resurfacing, which we've made a major effort, particularly over the last several years, to be able to bond and leverage Chapter 90 monies. I would point out that that static blue line at the bottom is the state's Chapter 90 money. So, that's the Chapter 90 contribution from the state, which is from our gas taxes. And except for that one little blip, which was right after Governor Baker got elected and fulfilled a campaign promise that he would release an extra $500,000, he has filed year after year a $200 million Chapter 90, which is the monies from our gas tax that we pay, and it's the monies we use to pay for infrastructure. And I was not pleased but not shocked that, when he announced his new budget, he also announced that he would be filing a $200 million Chapter 90 bill. So, that's one of the things we really want to focus on with our legislators, because this is money that every city and town could use immediately, not only to repair our transportation infrastructure, but to put people to work, to create, you know, jobs and really spur the economy. So, Chapter 90, and again, take pressure off of having to fund those infrastructure needs with property tax, which is obviously a more regressive way. So, that's our transportation investments that we've been able to do during this period of stability. Next slide. So, a key aspect, speaking of state government, of the fiscal stability plan was stabilizing city finances while lobbying the governor and legislature to address some of the key structural state funding issues. And if you read through any of the budget messages over the last period, I've always devoted time to many of these issues. So, education funding. You know, we're still waiting for reforms to the Chapter 70 funding formula, to take into account the real cost of special education, health insurance, et cetera, in the Foundation Formula budget. I put a little hashtag FBRC in there. And there's obviously a concerted effort right now, the Mass Teachers Association working with school committees and superintendents and other interests, and parents around the state to try to do the Fund Our Future campaign, which is to try to, once and for all, get the FBRC recommendations implemented, which, you know, conservatively estimate we're underfunding, are underestimating the cost by anywhere between $1 to $2 billion in Chapter 70, or at least the Foundation Formula on which Chapter 70 is based. Charter school funding. We're still waiting for full funding of charter school tuition mitigation, as per the state formula, which they are not fully funding. It's supposed to be a five-year formula. They've never even fully funded the first year of it at any time. We're obviously also waiting for a revision of the overall flawed charter school funding model. In past years, I've shown you the impact of charter school, the growing curve in terms of the amount of money we lose in tuition each year, and that seems to continue. Chapter 90, which I just mentioned, I won't belabor it, but again, still waiting for those increases in Chapter 90. Progressive income tax reforms. Obviously, when we talk about having to fund things on local property taxes, which are regressive, one way to be able to provide more funding for these critical programs is through the income tax and by making the income tax more progressive. Unfortunately, many of you know and supported the Fair Share Amendment, which was an effort to do that. It got shot down by the SJC, and so, we go back to the drawing board in trying to create more revenue. Whenever I am in a room with legislators or at a meeting with legislators, including, as recently as a couple of weeks ago up at GCC with Senator Commerford and state officials, I always like to point out that every time they don't raise taxes or don't raise new revenue, don't kid themselves that they're not raising taxes, because actually, they are, because their residents and constituents are having to pay more taxes at the local level in property taxes. So, property taxes are having to go up, and, you know, we've done historical data in past budget message that really just shows the cost shift that has occurred over the last 20 years from state funding of services and a share of state aid in municipal budgets, and how it has shrunk every year, which means we've had to put more and more onto property tax. And finally, local control. We're still waiting for more local control. It was funny to read, you know, my budget message from that override year, where we're basically, I was saying like, we've adopted the hotel tax, we've adopted the meals tax, we've adopted CPA, we've adopted everything you've given us. Like, if you're not willing to do this, give us more tools, we'll do it. And that includes things like economic development reforms, like liquor licenses. So, if we want to spur more economic development, we shouldn't have to go on bended knee to the legislature to request more liquor licenses when we should make that a local decision, and we should be able to control our own economic destiny. So, giving us more local option taxes would be excellent. Speaking of which, we did get two new local option taxes. You can change to the next slide, which I hope it appears. So, we do have two new, long-awaited local option taxes. First, obviously, is the adult-use marijuana local option tax. And then, recently, at the end of the legislative session, the legislature and governor adopted a short-term rental bill, which includes a local option tax for Airbnb. We automatically are opted into it because we have adopted the local option hotel motel tax. My two big complaints are, they should have done this a lot sooner. Obviously, the voters passed the adult-use marijuana law a couple of years ago now, and was supposed to have been implemented January 1st of this year. It then got kicked to July 1st. They got a six-month extension, and then, obviously, as we know, the first retail sale did not happen until November 20th, the very end of the calendar year. So, we still do not have any actual revenue from the marijuana local option tax. The timing of it, and the way that it's collected at the point of sale, and the way that it's then has to be reported and transmitted to DOR, there's always a couple of months lag for those local option taxes. So, we'll know end of March, beginning of April, what our, at least what our first quarter, which again, is really just going to be the end of November, December, and January, what those numbers will look like. I caution people that those were extraordinary times. For a big part of that, we were one of only two retailers that were open, so I think those numbers are going to be a little bit outsized. But we are going to be working with, working to try to develop some potential estimates of what that revenue could look like on an annual basis. It's just challenging not having any track record and not knowing how this economy, this new economy is going to shake out, also not knowing what other stores may open in the city, as well as stores in neighboring cities. The short-term rental tax cannot take an effect until July 1st. So, the earliest we would see revenue for that is literally beginning July 1st. Again, we're trying to make some estimates based on data that's available about how many Airbnb... many Airbnb users there are in North Hampton and in the city. We don't know how the new law will affect that, because the new law requires people to register with the Department of Revenue. And so that may impact the number of people that are Airbnb-ing. And then also, there's exemptions for people who don't Airbnb for more than 14 days a year, so they wouldn't pay the tax. So there's going to be a little bit of, a little bit of work to try to understand what that may look like. But those are two new local option taxes that will definitely provide us with some new revenue, which again, is revenue we don't have to rely on our property taxes to try to raise. Next slide. So Governor Baker's budget, which I referred to, I know this is small, you don't really have to see it, it's more just a visual. It's, it's red, it's the cherry sheet. Susan put those two cherries up there to remind me, it's the cherry sheet. I was actually looking for a slot machine that had cherry and a lemon, since that's kind of what I think of the governor's budget in terms of how it works out. So basically, Governor Baker's proposed budget, when it's applied to our cherry sheet, the budget that he just proposed, when you add up all of the new revenues and the new charges, we would receive $160,954 less in revenue for FY20 than we did in FY19. And so again, looking at things like, you know, charter school, a couple that I'd call out, charter school tuition reimbursement, going down $121,393. So we're going to get less, less than the less than we're supposed to get. But then when you jump down to the charges, you'll see that sending tuition is going up $187,611, with no measurable difference in the number of students. I mean, the number of students hasn't changed, but we're getting less reimbursement and our tuition charges are going up. And again, a lot of that has to do with the formula and the way it's calculated, and, and these are the kinds of things that we have to try to address. In terms of other things on there, you see Chapter 70. When you, when you cost out his proposal, we would receive in new Chapter 70 education aid, $56,120. I'm not sure what a percentage of your budget that is. It's a, there's a lot of zeros, there's a lot of zeros, point and a lot of zeros before you get to it. But that's what his Chapter 70 proposal would yield us. Now, he has said that he wanted to not, you know, fund Chapter 70 reform in the budget, which is, to me, a little odd, since it's a major budgetary item, but that he would be introducing a separate education bill to try to address the foundation budget matter. But of course, unfortunately, the way I read that is that, you know, that bill won't get taken up until the 20 budget's done, which means probably nothing in the 20 budget. So I'm very hopeful that, that our senators and our representatives will really try to force this issue as part of the Fund Our Future campaign. Those of you who have attended the Fund Our Future meetings, MTA has helpfully taken the, the Foundation Budget Review Committee recommendations and monetized what it could mean in terms of new revenue to cities and towns if we were getting the funding that we needed. Chapter 70 for North Hampton would increase $850,000. So that's $850,000 that would be available for education funding, that wouldn't have to be paid for under, either with override revenues or new override revenues. So that would be significant. So we are hopeful that that will happen. Obviously, this is the governor's budget. We still have the House budget, Senate budget, and then obviously, whatever the, whatever the conference committee can agree to and get the governor to sign. But not an auspicious start in terms of us looking at our budget to try to figure out what's new state revenue we would have to work with. FY2020 budget factors, the next slide, please. These are just some of the things we know now and some of the things we don't know that we'll be working on, but these are some of the key factors that we'll be looking at. I've already mentioned the local option taxes for marijuana and Airbnb. So those are some potent, those are some new revenues that we need to try to come up with and refine a number to build into the budget. Obviously, when you're trying to put a revenue into a budget, if you, if you overestimate and you, you know, put too much revenue, you don't raise that revenue, then you end up with a deficit in your budget and have to make cuts, et cetera. So we want to be accurate, conservative, but obviously, want to make sure that we can capture as much of that potential new revenue as possible. We also have some anticipated revenue from two new solar projects where we've, the council gave me authority to negotiate payment in lieu of tax agreements with. And so those could potentially bring us some additional revenue, again, you know, on the, on the order of $100,000 plus for both projects combined. Again, we say to be determined, because those projects are still in development, and they don't actually generate any pilot revenue until they get built. So whether they happen in 2020 remains to be seen. I know that in Counselor LaBarge's ward, the, the project with the combined marijuana growing facility, solar field and open space seems to be moving forward. So hopefully, that major solar field will get built, and we would realize some pilot revenue from that. Employee health insurance, another big wild card. We, again, we go through the joint, the, the GIC, and so we are waiting for the GIC. They're going through their procurement process right now, and they'll be announcing their rates usually at beginning of March. They have to go through a whole procurement process. So that will be obviously a significant number in our budget when you consider, you know, that it reflects about 10% to 11% of the overall budget. So a 1% change, one way or the other, could have a, you know, $100,000-plus impact on, on our bottom line. Net state aid, obviously, that's something that we know what the governor has proposed, and I, you know, spelled out again, the charter school tuition, charter school reimbursement conundrum, but we're hopefully putting House and Senate to be determined, because we're hopeful that the House and Senate will go back and, and really look at Chapter 70 reform and trying to do it in the context of the FY20 budget, as well as hopefully addressing the charter school reimbursement issue as well. Other to be determined is new city and school collective bargaining agreements. Both, all of our city unions, as well as our school unions, are finishing, they're in the third year of three-year contracts. So both the city and schools, myself representing the city, the school committee representing the school department, are in collective or beginning collective bargaining with all of our units. That will obviously determine what wage projections would be for FY20, as well as '21 and '22. But clearly, in putting together the 20 budget, having more clarity about what those agreements might look like are keys in how we build the budget. City retirement assessment, this is a sort of non-negotiable assessment that goes to the retirement board, based on the actuarial tables that get adjusted every year. So we know that in FY20, there'll be a $475,000 increase in our contribution to pay our retirement, future retirement obligations. Capital debt service, that basically means how much our, our general fund debt service will go up this year, again, to pay for all of the capital investments that we've made. So that'll go up about $87,000. So those are some of the numbers that we're looking at, and some of the unknown numbers that over the next several weeks, we'll be trying to read the tea leaves, particularly in terms of what happens on Beacon Hill, to try to determine what those numbers may look like, so that we can build a budget and, and present it to the city council. Next slide. So, coming back to where we started, the fiscal stability plan. This is the 20, this is the current fiscal stability plan that we're operating under. This is what is in the FY2019 budget book. Each year, I promised when we presented the plan back in 2013, we would, we would re-look at it, we would revise our estimates, and we would present an updated plan. So obviously, one of the big question marks in terms of where we are with building an FY20 budget is what does it mean in terms of the current and future viability of the fiscal stability plan? I mentioned earlier that the 2019 budget, you can see the first little blue in the middle there where FY2019 is, that's where we had to use a little under $300,000 of the fiscal stability funds in order to balance last year's 2019 budget. Then, just following last year's projections, the way the, the stability plan, as we had it projected, we would then have to use about $900,000 to close the 20 budget, and then in 2021, we would basically have to expend the rest of the stability fund, but even then, we would have a deficit. So that was sort of the model we were looking at last fiscal year. Obviously, we now have some potential new revenues. We also potentially have changes, some possibly of these structural changes in state funding that we can look at, but these are all the things will be evaluated in the next several months in leading up to our need to present a balanced budget to the city council for its review and approval. So again, each year, we, we adjust these numbers. So more state aid, more, you know, this new local revenue, additional Chapter 70, these could all forestall our having to use, you know, fiscal stability fund. On the same token, a 5% increase in health insurance, or a 7% increase in health insurance, or other factors, as we go through the budget process, could then, you know, could then put pressure the other way in terms of our needing to spend more money in the budget. So it's a fluid and, and moving process, but this is what the stability plan looks like. I have in red at the bottom my annual disclaimer, and from the first moment I presented the plan and every subsequent budget year, I've always been very clear that when the stability plan is exhausted, we'll be back to the question of, do we, do another general operating override to sort of renew the stability plan? Or do we make significant cuts in city and school services to balance future budgets? So I've tried to be upfront. This was always intended to be a bridge in terms of buying us stability over several years, but we knew that, again, that, that differential in terms of rising costs that go up on a regular basis, some of them fixed costs, and the inability to generate enough revenue to meet those, and not receiving enough of our state tax dollars back to be able to meet those, is basically the structural imbalance that we face and that other cities and towns across the Commonwealth face. So that is the last slide. I now have the obligatory questions slide, which I will ask you to put up. Oh, actually, let's do the budget timeline first. So this is just a quick timeline. Tonight, I present the joint meeting of the city council and school committee to just give you a preliminary forecast. The two school committees, the North Hampton Public Schools and Smith-Vogue, are required to adopt their budgets by April 16th and present them to me. So the school committee, the North Hampton School Committee and the Smith-Vogue Board of Trustees will be beginning their budget processes, meeting with their departments and staffs to develop that, and then eventually bringing them to the school committee and Board of Trustees for, for review and deliberation and hopefully final votes. Then traditionally, in April, after the school budgets have been adopted, I typically have town hall budget meetings around the city to meet with residents and to try to get their feedback. I am then required by the middle of May to submit my balanced 2020 budget to the city council, and then they have a deadline, obviously, of June 30th, to have held a public hearing and to vote to approve the budget in time for the start of the fiscal year on July 1st, 2020. So now we can go to the obligatory questions slide, which I have jazzed up a little bit in honor of, in honor of the Super Bowl, because the Patriots are playing this weekend, so I thought I'd have a little fun with that. So you can turn the lights on, and we can now move to questions, if you have any. It's a shorter presentation, I didn't say it would be easier to swallow or easier to deal with.
I don't know if you're accepting quite, Fred has his hand up, but I don't know if you're accepting questions from the audience.
I'm not really sure, our, under our rules, whether we are allowed to do that, unless someone wanted to vote to recognize a person, but I don't know. I'm certainly happy to field a question, but that would not be the normal protocol in this meeting unless there was a vote to recognize someone. But I can certainly answer his question after the meeting, I'd be happy to.
So, since I grabbed the floor, and less of a question, more of a comment, it's one that I make annually, I think, is, we are actually on track to abide by the system that was set up under Proposition 2 and 1/2. And Proposition 2 and 1/2, of course, is often reflected, it's often suggested that every community that goes and asks for an override is, is an admission of failure. But in fact, it's called 2 and 1/2 for a reason. It wasn't, it wasn't some chapter line. It's called 2 and 1/2% because it was meant to run below COLAs, the rate of inflation. It was, it was meant to force each community, every time, to go and solicit from the community, each municipal, municipal governance, to go before their community and say, "Do you want to continue to subsidize what we have?" And, and I have to say, it's worth noting that with your fiscal stability plan and the last, and the, and the basis for the last override that the community did invest in, you've done a remarkable job. You've actually, and with, with some corresponding luck, fortunately, to be noted. We're limited as to how much more growth we can actually have by physical constraints, among other things. The marijuana revenue, as you said, is a crapshoot. We continually hope for progressive taxation based on people's ability to pay, based on, as opposed to the regressive taxation, which is based on how much someone values your house. And it also, as you said, the biggest pressure, of course, it puts on people on fixed incomes in pretty dire straits, because they're now, their mortgages are long since paid down, but now they're paying a property tax bill that's equivalent to the mortgages they paid all throughout their lives. So essentially, this is a state, intentionally state-structured system that the state, the Commonwealth voted on and approved, and then we have the added trauma, basically induced by the state, of, of doing things like not a dysfunctional education funding formula, and then you add to that the charter school, their obligations and commitment to the charter school funding, which is tantamount to theft. I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I mean, that's a strong word, but I mean, I honestly don't see, if I did that to an individual, I think that they could say that I was stealing money from them. So, so the, you, I think you very well presented the budget, the constraints, the challenges that we're going to be facing, and, and of course, it all comes to a head this year, particularly along with all sorts of things like collective bargaining, also paying the additional increases that we're going to continue to see as our retirement commitments are going to increase. So, so I'm grateful for the presentation. I'm not really happy, as per usual, with the message, but that's not your fault, so I won't.
Just the messenger.
Yeah. And thereby not be shot.
Thank you. Ms. Voss, and then.
Just following up, I agree, it's really an impressive way that the override has been put to work to save money and to build up reserves, and I think that shows really good planning. My question is, how much growth do you anticipate in the coming few years? We had more growth during that period than had been anticipated. It's been, we've been able to grow, as you shared, but when does that come to an end?
And that is the challenge, because, you know, those key, those things that we, we made estimates about, you know, are tied to the economy. And so, you know, we were coming out of a worldwide recession, and so people weren't lending money, and people weren't buying, and then, and then they started, you know, again, building again. And so, so we try to be conservative and come up with what our new growth estimates are, but I, I can't predict whether, we certainly have new building systems that we know are going to continue to come online. There's still some additional housing development that's planned and permitted at Village Hill. We've got things like the marijuana cultivation facility, which is a major facility. So we seem to always So we seem to always have new projects in the pipeline. And so, you know, again, we try to make, make responsible estimates. So I, I try to be, you know, sort of bullish and optimistic, but it's, in many ways, it's beyond our control because it's really tied to the economy. Why people are buying new cars, I, I can't tell you. Maybe interest rates are low, maybe whatever, but clearly there was a surge in, you know, excise tax because people were buying newer cars. Maybe it was energy rebates, or maybe it was, you know, safer, lower gas mileage. I, I don't know, but those are the kinds of things that are, they're cyclical, and obviously, we keep hearing that there's going to be another recession and, you know, the stock market's been a little, a little shaky, but, but yeah, that's, that's part of the crystal ball that we have to try to, try to deal with. And it's part of the reason why you have stabilization funds because, you know, part of the reason why our, our reserves were so low in FY12 is because basically when the crash happened in '09 and '10, we were using our reserves to be, to prop up city government. So that's why you have them. Counselor Labarge, and then Counselor Murphy.
Mayor, I want to thank you and also thank Susan Wright for this great presentation. Also to Susan, I had the same concerns as you had. Mayor, why is it every year, everybody's very, very vocal about the budget itself? I mean, we need that increase and we don't get it. It's like deaf ears with them in Boston. So you're looking at how many years now, over 18 years, we've been asking for them to increase that budget, and nothing's happening?
Well, you know, again, I, Dr. Provost and I testified at the Foundation Budget Review Commission back in like 2014, I think it was. And so that report was issued then, and Governor Baker got elected, and there was that report presented to him, and, and the first thing he did was propose expanding charter schools. And so there have been strong advocates fighting to try to get that report, which was a bipartisan report that pretty much laid it right out there, to try to get that report looked at. There's been a push, part of the Fair Share Amendment was a way to try to provide the revenue to be able to fund the Foundation reforms, but obviously that failed. But there's definitely strong voices. We've definitely elected strong representation here in Northampton with, you know, Representative Sabadosa and Senator Comeford, as well as legislators throughout the valley, and I think we're just going to have to continue to put pressure on them that, you know, they need to address these critical reforms. Because we have schools that are, you know, that are facing receivership in some cases because of the fact that they, you know, they cannot afford the costs of, of educating their children. So, you know, that's the question. And I think at, at the end of the day, it is ultimately, I think, it's a, it's a revenue question. And so, and so that's just going to be what we have to try to keep pressure on them to try to address. Counselor Murphy.
And new growth, you've got to be careful with relying on that to actually help your bottom line. It depends on what that new growth is. You know, if that new growth is a commercial property, it actually helps the bottom line. If that new growth is a residential property that results in your enrollment going up, then it has to be a $600,000 or $700,000 residential property just to cover the education costs of one child in school. So to have a big new growth number doesn't actually always help the bottom line if that property increases the cost more than it generates income. So a big new growth number, if it's residential, could put you further behind the eight ball because of the services that we provide to residential properties that we don't necessarily apply to commercial properties. So, you know, it really does, it really does come around to the fact that, you know, to the bottom line, do what we did with the fiscal stability plan, it's going to take the voters to want to continue to invest in the city. And I mean, it's helpful to make the case with the fact that, you know, rather than getting four years out of it, we're getting close to eight years out of it. And we have run, you know, this group knows how tight a budget we run on both sides, but at the same time, if, if we want to be able to do it again, we're going to have to talk the, the voters into giving us another shot at keeping it going because we are going to add new collective bargaining and healthcare costs and everything else. So it's unrealistic to think there's pretty much any other way to solve it, and certainly, certainly not new growth. It takes the sting out, but it, it's not going to solve the problem.
Counselor Shiera.
Our retirement obligation is a significant increase, cost increase. Can you talk a little bit more about that and what the future holds and just sort of the realities of those increasing costs?
If you wouldn't mind, I have a member of the retirement board who's here, and I think, Mrs. Susan Wright, who's our finance director and also serves as my appointee on the retirement board, she can explain to you the actuarial issues regarding that.
So the, we're under obligation across the state, all of the retirement systems, to get to full funding by 2040. So what that means is that the employees, the contributions they make to their, their retirement will fully support the system. So back in the 70s and 80s, when they found that these retirement systems were not solvent if they kept going the way they were, they obligated all of the member communities and, and counties to get to full funding. So we are kicking in about five or six million a year to our retire, to our retirees' retirement. When we reach full funding, we don't have to pay that anymore, but we won't reach that. At the moment, we are on track to be fully funded, I think, 2035. But every two years, we have an actuarial valuation, and that recalibrates our glide path. And they take into account, the retirement board voted new mortality tables because people are living longer. So it's, you know, they're going to draw their retirement for a longer period of time. Salaries are going up as well. So that moving, that target gets recalibrated every two years. So we just had an actuarial revaluation. The other thing that happened is we had to lower our expectations for investments. We had been using 7.75 several years ago. It's been recommended that we move down to 6.5. So every time we plan that people are going to live longer, or we plan that our returns are going to be lower, the city, to keep on that glide path to fully fund by 2040, has to kick in more. So this last actuarial valuation, we dropped our discount rate from 7 and 1/2 to 7.375. So we're, every two years, we're kind of moving that down. So we are making very small adjustments, keeping in mind what the city can afford, but also trying to keep that retirement plan on track. Because when we finish paying for, when we get to 2040 and we get to full funding, we're going to take all of that money that we've been putting into the retirement system, and we're going to move it over to start paying for our OPEB, which is the health insurance for our retirees, which is our other big unfunded liability. So when we.
Forward to 2040, is what you're.
Right. When we get to 2040, you know, we'll probably be at like eight or 10 million into the retirement system, and all of that will go over to OPEB, and it'll make a huge, huge dent in that as well, but we're never really going to.
We loosely.
Yeah. It's never really going, we're, it's going to be a long, long, but that's why it does, that's why it took such a big jump this year, because we lowered the investment.
Could I just, while I have you here, just because I want the public to understand the full picture, the average retirement pension in our system?
The average retirement pension, last time I checked, was about $25,000, between $25,000 and $27,000.
A year.
A year.
So just want to, you know, just want to be clear that these are not, you know, golden parachutes that were, you know, these are most, many, in many cases, they're, you know, DPW workers who retire after 40 years, they're laborers, custodians, et cetera. So just, that's why I think that information's important when people hear about these pension obligations.
Well, and, and it should be noted too, that employees are contributing to this. Employees are contributing, new employees are contributing 9%, and if they earn over $40,000, they're contributing 11% of their pay. So they are contributing quite a bit, so.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you explain to us a little bit more about the, the reserve funds? I know it's hard for a lot of people that have asked me questions to understand, you know, I understand, we all understand that the bond rating improved when we had more money in reserves, and then we went from 200 some thousand to, what are we at, 12 million now?
I have to look at the total.
I don't, it's, but, but I guess people, people kind of say like, what's the end game? That number keeps going up. When are we done building that reserve? At what point is the cutoff where the bond rating would go down if we dipped into the reserve? Like, do we have any fund, fund room with that?
So typically, the first thing is, we, we are, we are utilizing, first of all, we have, we have policies for how we treat our various funds and how we build them up and how we draw down. So for the capital stabilization, we have a whole metric built in so that we do draw, when they reach a certain level as a percentage of the budget, we actually are drawing them down to pay for capital costs, to pay for, you know, various capital projects for city and schools. The, the other stabilization fund, the, just the general stabilization fund, we, we again try to maintain that at a level for when we have emergencies, when we have a big snow year where we didn't budget enough and we need to, we may need to dip into that. A few years ago, we had, we had those huge snow loads and we had to pay people to like hand shovel snow off the roofs because the city engineer and the city building commissioner was worried about them collapsing. So we had to go into emergency funds. So we, we try to maintain as a percentage of our overall budget, I can't cite the percentages, but I can get those to you, but there is a method to our madness and, and we do, again, we're not trying to build them up ad infinitum. We try to look at, you know, things like our, our undesignated fund balance, which is the free cash balance. DOR recommends, and the bond rating agencies look at, you know, somewhere between 5% to 10% of your operating budget that you're generating, that then you can use for capital projects and such. So we do have metrics, and again, we're typically, what we're putting into those funds are at the end of the fiscal year, when we have monies that get turned back to us. So there's unused salary, or there's unused, we don't spend money on a maintenance project or as much money as we thought we were, that comes back to us. Typically, what we do with that, what's called free cash or undesignated fund balance is we apportion a large chunk of it to the capital program, so we use that to fund the capital program. And then our practice has been to then put a portion of that, we usually go to the city council and to put a, a portion of it anywhere between 250,000 to 500,000 into those stabilization funds, because they're one-time monies. So we can't, we don't really want to spend them on operating expenses. So it's usually anything that we have left over after we've invested in capital projects or snow and ice, or having to pay for unanticipated veterans' benefits or, or legal funds, things like that, that we would then put the money away. But I can, I can follow up with you and get you more information. But again, keep in mind, you know, when you're borrowing, you know, $20 million, and if you get a, you know, a 2% interest rate versus a 5% interest rate, then that's going to have a major impact on what you have to pay out of the general fund every year to service that debt. So when we're paving roads or we're, you know, doing the matching funds for the MSBA school roofs, you know, we did a couple for NPS, we're about to do one for Smith-Vogue, it's, it's more than just like, yeah, we've got this fancy number, this AAA number, it means lower borrowing costs, which means lower operating costs. So it is important. But when you sit down with the, when we, when I'll sit down virtually, we have a conference call with the bond raiders, you know, they want it, they're looking at our audited statements every year, and they're looking, where are those reserve funds? Are they starting to go south? Are you starting to rely on them to fund your budget? Are you paying off your retirement obligation? Is your retirement system fully funded? What is your OPEB? That's another big one now that the, it's called other than post-employee benefits. So it's all the other stuff beyond retirement, which is basically health insurance. Our retirees are going to get health insurance, right? We've funded as a pay-as-you-go, and everybody's getting their health insurance, but accounting practices now want you to show that as a future liability, and so they want you to have a fund, almost like the retirement system fund, where you're putting aside money to pay for that future liability. And again, the bond raiders view that as part of the full faith and credit of, of this corporation, that there's that liability hanging out there. So, so that's the other reason why the bond rating issue is so important. So, yes. Ms. Brim.
Could you talk about, the health insurance costs are clearly a big chunk too, and I'm curious how, if the Chapter 70 funding, health insurance is, is, keeps being discussed in the Chapter 70 funding, when they say like if we were fully funded and health insurance is kind of put into that, how does that affect a city? When Chapter 70 is linked to the school, to schools, like how would that affect the overall GIC and everything?
Well, Chapter 70 is, well, health insurance, at least in the city, is an indirect cost that the city pays. So we pay for all of the, all of the school health insurance, but it does show up on the, the final audited statement for the schools in terms of what our contribution. It's just, it's just in-kind, not direct money. So to the extent that, and again, you know, the, I don't have the chart this year, but I mean, health insurance costs, you saw the little graph, those are going up. And any of you who have, you know, you know, spouses who work in a private industry, you know, health insurance costs are going up even at a, at a greater rate. And so one of the things that the foundation formula, you know, didn't account for was, you know, was looking at 1980s where health insurance was still relatively cheap, and it wasn't going up like that. And so the cost of educating a child, they weren't factoring in the inflation in health insurance. They also weren't factoring in how much we're spending today on special education and, and ELL and all the other supports that we increasingly are providing. So, so to the extent they recognize those costs and, and in the overall cost of educating a child, then the funding and the formula, the city's obligation, the state's obligation, you know, need to reflect that. And so that's where that additional funding would come from. Although there are concerns about, you know, the governor wants to fund it over like seven years, and that will just not work. We'll, that will, we'll just never get above, our heads above water under that scenario. He's kind of kicking the can down the road, in my, in my opinion. So, so that's the issue. Did I?
So it's bundled, it would just be bundled up when they talk about health insurance in the, in fully, in the foundation budget?
Yeah.
It's just, okay.
Yeah. I mean, there's tech, I mean, they're looking at the cost of running a school district and the cost of educating child, what it costs per pupil to do that. And one of the big factors is paying employees, but also providing health insurance benefits for employees. And, you know, special ed and, and health insurance have been going like this, and the formula never, didn't account for that. So really, the, what, what the foundation budget really isn't, I mean, schools that just fund their budgets at foundation are, you know, they're, they're in trouble typically. And, you know, we're over 120% of foundation, and we feel like we're in trouble every year. And, you know, other school, much wealthier districts are, are funding at a much higher level. So therein lies the rub. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you for your great presentation. Appreciate it. So I have three quick questions. So you mentioned stabilization fund and reserve funding, and we didn't talk rainy day funds. Are these all one and the same?
Yeah. Rainy day fund is just another terminology for a stabilization.
Okay.
You know, like the, like on the school side, we have the school choice fund, you know, the school choice funds, which is sort of the school committees and school departments' rainy day fund. And it's sort of, so it's, it's, it gets, different terminologies get used, but basically, it's a fund that, that, that gets set aside, it's outside of the, the turnover every year in the operating budget, and it requires a higher threshold of votes by the city council to take money out of it. It requires.
Those three are more or less the same?
Yes, they are. Just they're categorized for different purposes.
Okay. And then secondly, can you clarify for the marijuana tax? Does the city get 3% or 6%?
So the city gets as a tax, as a, as a, as a income tax, or sales tax, we get 3% on the sale. Then we are allowed to negotiate a host community agreement for a, for a five-year period only of a mitigation, mitigation funds, and that can be up to 3%. And those, there's, you may have read, there's some controversy, it's not controversial for me, but it's controversial for some in the industry and, and some on the commission about the, about those, those host community agreements and the funds and how the, and how the funds will be used for mitigation. At this point, we've negotiated a 3% host community agreement. So those are funds that would be paid to us to be used to mitigate impacts of, of marijuana. But again, it's not a recurring revenue, but beyond five years. It, it goes away after five years.
Okay. And then the other 3% will go into the general fund?
Must go into the general fund, and we will, again, that's just additional revenue in the general fund that we will allocate towards all the things. the general fund that we will allocate towards all the things we've been talking about tonight.
Right. And then, okay, thank you. And then lastly, real quick, so US Rep. Richard Neal, I believe is Chair of the Federal Ways and Means Committee now?
Yes.
Do you see any opportunities there in terms of speaking with his office? Is that something our local legislators should do, whether you and Dr. Provost should do? Or can we, a city council and school committee members, get involved in, in trying to sway his thinking and his support that he, you know, sway his support in matters that are important to us?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, clearly there are critical, you know, federal grant programs that oftentimes come under attack, things like Title I and other important, you know, funding that often come under attack. And obviously, he's the head of the tax writing committee, so any, he's the revenue guy. So anytime a budget is developed, so I think there's things like that. There's things like, there are often threats to taking away the, you know, municipal bonds are tax exempt. There have been various proposals floated to take away the tax exemption for municipal bonds, which would be not a good thing for municipalities. And I know he's been very outspoken on that. And then obviously, there's this massive wealth transfer that we all just were subjected to under the tax plan, which we're seeing, we're still finding out some of the impacts of that. And I think that's certainly something that he's going to, that we hope that he's going to prioritize to try to reverse. And that's everything from, you know, deductibility of charitable donations, state and local income tax deductibility, which doesn't affect us, but it has, it does affect many states and many communities, which is basically a local tax increase where you're being double taxed on your, the theory always was that you, you know, you wouldn't tax people on the tax they paid at the local level because it would be a double tax. So they've now capped that. So there are communities in Massachusetts and states where that double taxation is occurring, which again, is going to make it hard to then go to those people and say, could you give more local taxes for the schools?
Sure.
So I think those are some big systemic things that he could work on. And so, you know, those would be things we would want to be lobbying him. This, of course, assumes that there'll be an actual rational budget process where we'll be considering a full fiscal year budget, which really hasn't happened. We seem to be living on three-month extensions. And so, yeah, but he certainly is in a place to influence that and in a place to influence possible, you know, new revenue, which could then increase, you know, formula funding for education and other programs.
For sure. Thank you.
Ms. Hennessy and then Counselor Klein.
Two quick ones. One, the impact on MGM. Do you see any impact?
Yeah, I mean, we're, speaking of that sort of staggered effect of the way those local taxes get collected, because, you know, they get collect, and so we, we still don't have, we're still waiting for the months that where, you know, MGM opened in terms of our meals tax and our, I mean, actually, the last quarter that we have data for, our meals tax were up like over 3%, I think, for, oh, hotel motel taxes were up 3% for that quarter over last year's quarter. You know, we certainly seem to have had a lot of out-of-state visitors lately. And I don't think they're here to gamble. And so I actually, there was a story about MGM helpfully providing a shuttle from Northampton to MGM and I was going to helpfully provide a shuttle from MGM to NEDA to sort of counter that, but.
A joint agreement.
Exactly. At least a two-way shuttle. So we will be waiting to see, I mean, we obviously have concerns about what the impacts could be on our motels, hotels, on our restaurants. Entertainment's a big concern that I have. We have seen anecdotally some shows that used to happen in Northampton and that shifted to MGM. And, you know, we did get mitigation funding from the, from the gaming commission and we have engaged a firm that's helping us put together a marketing, a way to sort of market Northampton to try to make sure that we capture visitors to Springfield. But I also will say that the numbers that I've seen and that experts have looked at for the casino have actually been coming in under projections. They haven't been performing to the level. There was clearly the honeymoon period, but the honeymoon has been much shorter and the revenues haven't been the same. And I'll tell you, I've met with MGM officials and they've said that, you know, they're still trying to figure out the sort of Western Mass or, you know, New England gaming patron because the things that they are doing, that they may do in other casinos aren't really working. And so they're trying to figure out what it's going to take. I know they've been, you know, raising some of the winning percentages and things like that and tweaking that. But, so it remains to be seen, but we're trying to be vigilant and we're trying to be proactive.
And what would you want, Chapter 90? He's 200 million now, what would you, what would, those of us who are?
Cities and towns have, for the last several years, been lobbying for 300 million, getting it up to 300 million. And, and, you know, we've done, MMA has done surveys of cities and towns. Certainly, Northampton could spend another, could spend the money. It's right now, you know, the 200 million that gets farmed out on a formula based on the number of road miles, we get about a million, a little over a million dollars. So, you know, that would be an extra, you know, half million that we would be able to put into more roads and more bridges and more sidewalks and less, having to spend less tax dollars. So that one's critical. And again, that's our gas tax that we're paying. And, you know, when you look at the actual infrastructure in the state, road infrastructure, you know, we're, 80 to 90% of it is in cities and towns, yet we get about 10% of the gas tax and they get 90%. So it's sort of this weird perverse inverse relationship. Now granted, you know, Secretary Pollock will tell you that, you know, they have these huge systems like the Big Dig and huge bridges and the Tobin Bridge, so they do have some large systems. But definitely, we, the Chapter 91, and I don't understand it because to me, it feels like it's sort of a no, it would be a no-brainer, at least for the legislature, like that's something that would benefit every city in town. And I don't get it because the infrastructure's not going to get any cheaper to fix, the more we, so why you wouldn't invest now, I don't understand that. And that tends to be bonded money, the state bonds for the Chapter 90 funding, so, but again, I don't understand the thinking on that. But we're going to continue to lobby and hopefully they'll raise it. Counselor Klein.
I have two new revenue questions. One, very related to the last question. Are we imagining with the revenue from the marijuana tax, are we also looking at or projecting an increase in the motel and the meals taxes?
Well, we're certainly going to be paying attention to that. We definitely have some signs that, and you may have seen the story in today's Gazette about local business owners who commenting on what the impacts have been on it. And, you know, it's been mixed, some have seen no impact, others have definitely seen an uptick in customers. There's a lovely family that owns the liquor store right next to the, right next to the dispensary and they've definitely seen an increase in business. They were actually kidding with me, they wish they had bought a bunch of umbrellas on one weekend because people were standing out in line in the rain. They said they could have made a fortune on umbrellas. But certainly, some restaurants have reported that. We'll know better, again, once we look at our hotel motel numbers for those same periods that we have the tax collections, whether we can draw any correlations, but we'll definitely be looking at that. I mean, I think anything that brings visitors to the city is going to, is going to be a benefit for hotels and for, you know, local option taxes. I think that's the reason, that's one of the reasons why we want to make sure that we're, you know, with MGM to the South, that we are remaining competitive and that people are still coming to Northampton and coming to concerts here and coming to eat here, so.
The other piece too is pilots. You mentioned, we have the possibility of pilots with these new solar field projects.
Yes.
Are there any other, is there anywhere else that you're looking, thinking about in terms of pilot funding?
Well, as some of you know, in the FY 2016 budget, I embarked on a major pilot program for tax-exempt properties in the city, tax-exempt institutions, and went through a fairly long public process and dialogue. And at the end of the day, was not successful, it was a voluntary program, was not successful in creating any long-term pilot agreements. The solar one is a really unique thing and it's just because of a quirk in the way that the appellate tax board has interpreted the definitions around property tax for solar installations. And so, and so right now, the guidance is that rather than trying to charge them a regular property tax, that cities and towns enter into these pilot agreements. The good news is, you know, it means we're going to have a guaranteed new source of revenue for 20 years. But those are really kind of unique situations. So we may have other solar arrays that may come along. I know there's some other folks looking at large arrays, but, but, but that's sort of a niche kind of a thing. So that's all I can tell you. We've negotiated with pilots, with everyone who will negotiate with us, from the fairgrounds to, to obviously the city properties that we've sold, to tax-exempt entities, we've included pilots. But in terms of the largest tax-exempt, it's funny you should ask that because I was looking at some DOR spreadsheets today, as I want to do. And if you look at, again, the total assessed value and percentage of tax-exempt property, 28% of our city is, is tax-exempt property. And when you look at how we rank in cities, Worcester, Cambridge, Boston, North Adams, Chelsea, Pittsburgh, Northampton. So we're in the top 10 in terms of communities that have tax-exempt, large tax-exempt properties. North Adams is new, I assume that's mass Moca, you know, going from commercial to a giant nonprofit. So that is a, it remains a conundrum, there's legislation to try to address it, but I charged that hill once and I'm not really sure what else I can say about that. And I actually, and I think at the time, I said, I want to do it during the time of fiscal stability, not wait till there's an emergency, which is when people usually start saying, why aren't you asking these institutions to pay? So we had a really long, thoughtful process and at the end of the day, it yielded some small voluntary contributions for a couple of years, but nothing that are long-term, like many institutions negotiate in other, in other parts of the state and other parts of the country. So, I'll just go down the line. Counselor Shiera, Counselor Dwight, Counselor Bidwell.
Back to the host community agreements. After the five years have passed, can't you reapply with the CCC for another five years?
It's unclear. The legislation says, and it's really, it's not actually an application process to the CCC, it's the law says that in order to get their first license, you have to negotiate a five-year host community agreement, but it's limited at five years at this point, the way it reads. It's an open question whether they could be renewed or not. My sense will be that there's, if the, if the current host agreements last and stand up to scrutiny and last five years, then it may be hard to get them to renew that. Just saying that honestly because it's, I'm not going to say anymore, lest it be used against me in a future proceeding. But, you know, because really what it's supposed to be is to mitigate the impacts. You're supposed to be able to show that this money is mitigating impacts. But of course, none of us, this is a brand-new industry and we don't, none of us know what those things are. And, and so, so that's, it's a bit of an unknown for all of us. So anyway, that's an open question and I know there's some threatened, the Cannabis Commission has asked the legislature for the authority to review host agreements, to try to police them more, but we'll see what happens. So anyway, I'm not making a lot of noise about host community agreements.
I'm asking that.
Sticking with cannabis, the Cannabis Commission kicked down the road another potential to, the other leg of the legalization, which was to be important to tourism as far as it goes, is the, the basically pot bars.
Consumption cafes, yeah.
Yeah. And delivery systems, among other things. And also, I mean, part of the problem, of course, is people who do drive from Tennessee can come and purchase marijuana products, but there's no place for them to consume them and they can't bring them back to Tennessee. So there does thereby present a bit of a problem, whereas if they're, if they become a little more accommodating and the state does finally get together to figure out how to do this, there's some potential revenues to be realized from that. Of course, there's no way to anticipate what that would be, but the fact is, there's hope there, there's some, some promise in that too, because that would actually broaden the breadth of taxable entities and also potential future host agreements.
Yeah. It would and it would also open up the industry to, to people who may not traditionally have access to the kinds of capital that it takes to be able to start up, build a, you know, 20,000-square-foot greenhouse, that kind of a thing. So that's the other promise.
It would be actually more small business.
Exactly, yeah.
Than large corporate systems.
Right now, the Cannabis Commission is working on regulations, but they have, the law, the law would need to be changed to allow that to happen. Right now, it's an opt-in that would require a ballot question. I know there's people trying to change that, but there's, I've definitely heard from people who are interested. I just think the commission and, you know, obviously is trying to get the retail component, you know, licensed up. And then I think that's probably something they'll be working on, along with delivery. So it certainly happens in other states and they've found a way to make it happen. So we'll see what happens. But again, it's new revenue, but I do caution people, you know, it's not going to be like chap, the kind of money we need in terms of Chapter 70 and foundation budget reform and those kinds of numbers. So it's definitely new revenue, but we're not smoking our way out of this problem, so.
I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I just.
I have two slightly separate things and part of it is to just share some thoughts while the city council has joined us, if that's okay? I'm not sure it's a question for you, but you might have a response. One is, as a school committee member, it really worries me how much time we spend talking about the pot shop. I say that because it would be wonderful to have revenue, yes, but it's really, in some sense, also normalizing this for a very, this group of students and we know it's really bad for their brain development. So I just say that as something that we should all be aware of and I think we should be aware that it's very important to continue education. I know some of this money is going into that, but probably not enough to do what it needs to do so that our high school, especially our high school students who are smoking pot at a really high rate, if you ask the prevention coalition for their numbers, realize that there's problems with that. So that's one, just comment. And the other comment I have is, looking at just things related to the school committee, we have had those really great five-ish years of financial stability and at the same time, I'm very worried about the next period of time. And as Counselor Dwight said at the beginning of this meeting, it's really up to our community to have a conversation, to say, do we want to tax ourselves more? And that's really the only option I see that we have to continue supporting ourselves at this level. And one thing that we haven't talked about publicly so much is our, even though we've been doing okay as a community, we're not paying our teachers very well. They are getting paid at the very bottom of the state. And I just put that out there because as a community member, I'm not okay with that and I think we need to find money to fix that and that just adds to the problem. Thanks.
Counselor Bidwell.
I too had a marijuana revenue question, but I want to acknowledge that that's a very important point and the public health issues associated with marijuana in Northampton and particularly as it pertains to school kids is something we do need to keep uppermost in our minds and anything we can do to get appropriate amount of dollars to education and trainings, we absolutely need to do. So it's a very, I hear you, it's a very important point. But at the very pragmatic level with marijuana revenues, my question is, and then I had just a general observation, but the question is, in the governor's revenue projections, do those preliminary projections reflect anticipated state revenues coming from the marijuana tax?
Definitely has some projections in there that we've looked at. The challenge, of course, is understanding, you know, it doesn't say where the revenues are coming from and, you know, we were trying to do a little extrapolation already from that and we're still trying to tease that out. But definitely, he's put a revenue number in there, like he did with casinos, like he's done. But again, they're making a projection, I don't know what that's based on. Those are some of the things we're going to try to tease out over the next few months to see if we can extrapolate from that. But then you have to understand, like what percentage of the market share did Northampton sales represent to understand, you know. to understand, you know, what of that revenue we could allocate to ourselves. I think it's been pretty strong in the early going, but how that will, you know, once Boston opens a dispensary, for example, you know, Salem just opened one a few weeks ago. There's more in the 617, Albany, you know, and other places. I mean, closer to Albany, you've got the Berkshire, so, anyway. And I will say to Ms. Voss's point, you know, one of the things that's in the host, every host agreement that I've negotiated is grant funding for a nonprofit organization that works with youth and responsible use, like the Prevention Coalition, to be able to try to expand and fund their education services around this issue, to make sure that there's responsible use. So, but it is an adult-use industry, 21 and over, just like, and I can tell you that the, you know, it's very strictly enforced, at least what I've seen so far with NEDA. So. Other questions?
Just to follow up with an observation. Back to the, the new growth numbers. I'd just like to observe that the, that $275 million of new growth over a four- to five-year period, it, it really is an impressive number. And we do need to acknowledge that it is primarily a function of a relatively robust economy during that period of time. But I think we should, as a, as a community, pat ourselves on the back a little bit about how very forward-thinking zoning, planning, going back to Mayor Higgins administration, the Sustainable Northampton Plan that was adopted at that time, that there's a very good planning department and a very good planning board and very good tweaks to zoning that have resulted, by and large, with the right type of development in the right places. So I think we've done a pretty good job of harnessing the market forces out there to, to generate the right kinds of development that, that generate the revenue from that, from that new growth. And we certainly can't rely on it, on that type of curve going forward. But it is interesting that there are, continue to be opportunities that, that develop. And I'm sure we'll be good at harnessing those and putting them in the right places going forward, too.
Definitely. Ms. Fallon.
This is probably not relevant, well, it's definitely not relevant for this budget year, but looking forward. How does, so I know there's been a lot of focus on a complete and accurate count for the 2020 census. How does the census typically affect the federal funding and state funding that come to us?
I think you should ask, because I just had a meeting with Census Bureau and the Secretary of State to sort of kick off the census program, which is still quite a ways off. But they're trying to lay the early groundwork for, you know, ramping up to hire census workers and to begin the count. And it's critical, because it's, and there's information that they'll be putting out. One of the things they want community leaders to do is to really emphasize how important this is in terms of, you know, our congressional apportionment, you know, how many congressional seats we have. If you lose population, you use congressional seats a lot. And then that trickles down to the state legislative districts. And then ultimately, it comes down to the local level when we redraw our wards and, and figure out our, our representation here. But then many of the formulas for funding are per capita-based. So it has a critical impact on, on how much federal funding we get. And so that was one of the, that was one of the big takeaways, is as we ramp up, and again, it's not really gonna start till, you know, it doesn't start until 2020. But, but one of the things is trying to get local leaders to impress upon how important it is for their residents in their community to, to take the census. And obviously, there's a lot of challenges going on right now because of, you know, the current administration. And there's some litigation about what kinds of questions are and aren't gonna be on the census, and those are making their way through the courts. But obviously, people, there may be some who would have an interest in suppressing, you know, the census count, particularly in, among certain populations and among, and maybe in certain states. And so, because again, that means, you know, one less seat here means another seat in Texas or some other, some other less blue state. So, so it's critical, and that's gonna be something coming up over the next, well, again, watching in early 2020 and then continuing on into the, into the summer of 2020. And then the count happens, and then the census gets tabulated, then it gets released, and then usually, those 2022 elections would be with newly drawn, redrawn congressional maps and state maps as well. So it's critical, yeah, especially Western Mass, because we've lost, I mean, Massachusetts has lost congressional seats. And by virtue of our population, that means we tend to lose congressional seats as well. So it's critical. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. And obviously, we'll be moving forward, you know, meeting with departments and getting, making the formulations that we need. If you have other questions, let us know.
All right, I have one. So how do we think about moving forward in terms of who should, how does an override get proposed? And who decides if that's an appropriate community conversation to start happening?